Okay, I'd like to make a motion to open our workshop meeting.
Second.
I'm not ready for that motion. Thank you.
Want to do a roll call?
When I am ready, yes.
Oh, you're gonna make us wait.
Patience. Thank you. You'll have the second, please.
You can go ahead and put David on.
The two of us.
I think we spoke at the same time.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Chair Bristow?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, so we have a couple of members of the public here. I just want to talk about what I'm thinking of for the meeting tonight. We have a number of things on our agenda. This is our workshop session, so board members are going to kind of talk about, I guess, take a look at some applications on our agenda, make sure we understand them, maybe come up with a list of some discussion topics for the regular meeting. Then the regular meeting, we'll have our public hearings. So the workshop, we're not taking public input. During the regular meeting, which starts at 6:30, we'll take public input. We have open public hearings. I plan to start with the short-term rental law is the first thing. Actually, let me wrap up three things in place first. But anyway, I'd like to start with the short-term rental law, and we'll take whatever public input there is for that, and then the board will have a discussion on it, and then we'll carry on to 50 State Street matters. So just wanted to let you know if that's what your plan is. So if you're here for 50 State, it's gonna be a little while before we get there for the public topic, but we may well talk about it during our workshop. So that's that. Okay, let's jump right in. I'd like to start talking about 50 State a little bit, and I remember at our last meeting, there was a whole bunch of confusion as to exactly what was going on, and she managed to track down the old approved site plan for 50 State, which I guess we all have copies of, and there's also new ones. But, I mean, this is what it looked like before. I'm just gonna start with that, but there is some confusion over just the orientation of this and what's going on. So I just want to start by making sure everyone kind of understands what's going on here. So there's State Street is shown over here on the drawing, and these are all the residential properties along State Street. And we have Northfield Commons, which is a shopping plaza there. And I know there is confusion about where parking was located, where businesses were located, where the residents are located, but all these shaded boxes here are residential properties.
You're talking about the properties on the southern part.
The southern part, yeah. So we're in S1. So then there is a drive aisle that you drive in, you're probably familiar with it, you drive around and drive back out. That was in the prior approval, and I believe the prior one actually even shows turning radiuses and things like that, because that was a concern to the fire department, so they wanted to make sure those were reserved. So my understanding of what's proposed so far is there's this new little red building, which is an addition to the building, and then there's a new dumpster area behind Building J, and I don't even, and that's over towards where Pittsburgh Lumber is.
Where is it on the site plan?
Yeah, I'm trying to... Oh, there it is.
It's on the...
The third building next to...
Gotcha.
Yeah. And I wasn't sure what was...
There's a dump area.
Okay, and then it is not the Argeni right-of-way that's behind it, it's Powers that's built, property is right behind that, which is interesting. And then, so that is what's going on. We just received some new information. I don't know if anyone got a chance to take a look at these yet, but there were some new drawings. So they gave us an updated rendering. I was wondering previously about this rendering, because it previously showed it as the building was lower than the one next to it. Now they're showing it as one big long sheet roof and one big long section, and it looks like proposal is to have the same corrugated steel exterior on both sides of the building. This new one does show the light fixture locations. So there's two light fixtures on here. It does not show the other light fixture location where the door is on the side, so if you look at the other side, it's not showing that, you know?
Just one thing, on October 29, we have this drawing that, to my eye, looks like those were the same height.
Oh, yeah, that was the one that was just received. And this updated one was. And then what the rendering we had, that they showed us previously, was different. They showed them as different heights.
The roof was lower by a couple of inches.
But anyway, they've changed their plans, so this is what's before us now.
Right.
About what it was before, it doesn't matter.
Right.
But you were saying the third exterior light is not visible?
Well, I don't know. I believe they said somewhere in their plan that it's gonna be 12 feet high and over this door. We'll have to find, I think they should update the drawing to say where it is, and I think it should just be right over the door. To add a couple more things, she had the lighting plan in here from previously. I'm able to track that down. So I was kind of wondering if what's going on with that compares to existing. So if you look at this, lighting plan here, oriented. This is page S3A in our old drawing.
The old one?
Yep.
Gotcha.
They did not resubmit this, but I just want to show what was submitted previously. So on this one here, this is actually has the photometrics on here that shows the brightness level. That's all the numbers that are on the plan. And what our code says is it typically wants an average of one-foot candle for parking lots, and I think it has to be, I'd have to look at what it is, but it's supposed to be like .01 at the property line. So those are the targets. So you'll see that the numbers right under the lights are much higher, and then they drop as you get further out. But in general, it's not designed to have massive illumination. It's designed to be reasonable. And we also see, we don't really know what's going on in the back half of this site. There is a light on this plan that's right next to the dumpster, and I believe that is over what they're proposing as the door. So that was previously illuminating this back area over here.
Would that be the door, though? Wouldn't that be?
Oh, you're right, that would be over there. So they're proposing to remove that. I've noticed they actually had, did they have another light there? Or did they move it? I went over there earlier today.
When we last spoke to them, they made it sound as if this original light would effectively be moved forward to the new ending of the building.
When I went over there an hour ago, there is a light fixture located right here, which is not shown on this lighting plan, so I'm not sure where that came about. But, so basically, it looks like this light fixture was moved over here, which, I don't know. But anyway, so this is the end of the current building here.
Yeah, okay.
So this is the dumpster area, and then there is the little building there has some type of light on it as well.
Right.
I don't know if I see that.
I see yours.
So this is the end of the existing building, has a little light on it. There's a dumpster area here, it's dark out obviously, so it's not hard to see things, and then the other little building has a little light on it. So that's what's going on. The other thing I know, I took a look at when I walked over there, is I saw the fence. The photo of it isn't very good, but basically, there's the edge of the pavement here, there's a little bit of a grass incline, and then there's a fence, and the fence is six feet high. And I took a look through some of our landscaping code, and it says that where commercial but residential, they want it screened with, and one of the things that's allowable is a five-foot-high fence. So if there's a five-foot-high fence there, that seems like it complies with screening requirements. We had some public comments from the resident that lives there, and we'll listen to those and take a look at it. But I just want to give everyone kind of a background of kind of what's going on here.
Is that fence new?
I have no idea about the fence. Oh, here's a, here's a better view of that light, by the way.
So I was actually, I was there yesterday. And I actually took a look. It looks very nice. Now again, I don't know if it's just high quality. It still continues to look nice. But it looked in good shape.
Yeah.
It looked like it's on the resident's property, too. It didn't look like it's on the property line. And, but it's close to the property line, so it doesn't, I mean, that's usable enough to me.
So it's on the resident's property. Do we know whether it's something the resident put up or whether the business put up? We don't know?
I don't know.
Okay.
Well, I know there's a fence there, and normally a fence is required.
Yeah.
It looks like it is facing the resident's property. So I'm guessing they put it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's my assumption.
Is there a gate in it?
Yes.
There was a gate there.
And if that building goes in, then the gate is...
Opens to a wall?
No, I, we had an application for a variance, and I still don't know the details of that exactly, because nothing was specified. But if we go back to the new plans... So they had said that they wanted to put the building on the property line. So this is the new building. Don't know what the garage is to the property line in the other direction. But when I took a look at the zoning code for this district, it says when it's a budding residential, the rear setback is 35 feet when you take a look at up in the setback. So they, I believe they're requesting a variance for zero-foot setback when 35 feet is required. So that's a large request.
Significant departure.
And I don't believe we have ever approved that, a zero setback variance. We did one for three feet with the garage of, once upon a time.
Were the variances involved in the 2016 site plan with you?
I don't recall that we approved... I mean, the buildings...
But those were all pre-existing.
These are all pre-existing and non-conforming buildings.
Okay.
So I think that's something we should discuss at the meeting is what we think of this, is to sort out the setback requirements and what we think about these. Now, the setback requirements for the dumpster, I don't know what's going on there. So that might be a 10-foot setback.
Oh, the one that's up to the Powers property?
Yeah, so the dumpster over there, that's also right on the property line. I don't know.
Looks like it's over slightly, over the property line, right?
That's what the doors...
Oh, that's, oh, gotcha, that's where the doors are.
And that's a whole other matter, too, if you're swinging the doors over there. I don't know what to make of that, but... So one question I had for folks is whether we want to get a larger site plan that shows the area in question in more details. I was looking at our code, and the standard requirements is for site plans are a scale of a quarter inch. Here equals one foot. And so if we want a zoom-in of just this area and the dumpster area, and then have them show the distances to the property line, I think that makes sense. Okay.
Yeah, this is pretty hard to read.
And I can go over some other concerns in our regular meeting and I have a lot of things that we're missing, but one of them was getting elevations of the building, and it looks like they have done that. We do not have elevations of the dumpster area. Anyway, we can go through that in more detail, but I want to make sure, first of all, that we're all on the same page and having a kind of a general understanding of what's going on, and see if anyone has any other questions about that. Other things I had observed. They submitted new from last time. They submitted constant ones. And I had noted that they had proposed putting downspouts on this building, and they pointed out hills. So I think that's something we can talk about in the meeting is what's going on with drainage and how water is going to work. So you can think about that. Let's see. Any other questions anyone had? Or topics they want to bring up at the meeting? I want to, I want to go, well, my plan is in the meeting is to kind of go through these sheets one at a time, and if we have some concerns or we think some changes need to get made, let's just go through that and discuss them. I had, I prepared a list of that, I'll share. But it's probably better to do it in the meeting. Other things going on. This drawing here, I didn't know if anyone could explain to me what exactly this is?
That's for the LWRP. At the last meeting, do you want me to explain, sorry?
Well, you're in the one, so sure.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, you can explain it.
Okay. At the last meeting, the attorney asked for a list of the LWRP zones and the STRs. So the pink represents the STRs, the greens represent the LWRP, at which you guys, I guess, are going to be reviewing for part of the application.
Okay, so the green area is where the STRs are allowed?
No, he is the...
The green area is the LWRP.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, oh, you didn't, I like the canal. So the dashed area is, so this area is too.
So that was...
The portions of the LWRP that are included in the STR law?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, and the pink?
Are known STR residences that are quiable, so they're not in the public package going for the board.
Okay, now, there is one bed and breakfast that's been there for ages. Are you, I don't even know if that's acting as a bed and breakfast or an Airbnb or what? Does anyone know what the status of that is?
The canal happened?
Yeah.
Believe it's a bed and breakfast.
Yeah, that's right.
I think it's active.
Yeah, it is.
And I think that was, I don't know how many rooms they have, but I don't, it doesn't matter. It was grandfathered in. Okay, so that's listed in here even though that's really kind of something different?
Yeah, because it's in the green, it's part of the LWRP of that area. Yes.
Okay.
No, it isn't in there, right?
I was gonna say, I don't think it is.
It isn't. It's not in the green.
Yeah.
Well, you know, we have been this right here.
Is it there? I thought it was right there.
It's right here.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, that's the bridge.
Okay, so, so this is...
That's main, that's state in Monroe.
Okay, so, okay, so this is the...
That's the fire district paths.
So this is the canal, the canal lamp in is where I just, this over here, and so this is like a second-floor short-term rental or something like that, over one of the commercial buildings?
I'm not really sure what your point, I didn't memorize the map. What are you...
Come on.
I guess it doesn't matter. These are all very known short-term rentals.
That's a known STR, that little pink one right there.
Okay.
That's in the green.
So, yeah, it must be involved.
Yeah, it's gotta be.
I heard some people coming out of there the other day.
Okay.
I always wonder what was up there.
Interesting, I didn't even realize there was one there.
Okay.
That is a board pathway item, so it's where we're all at. The zoning map is on the... I'm sorry.
I was just saying articles on the...
What's the website? The green and pink map is not on the website. The zoning map is on the website.
Well, anything before us is accessible to the public, so if they want it, you need to say handout?
I don't need to release that unless they submit a FOIL, because it has addresses for the STRs that are confidential.
Okay.
That's, that's why the map isn't on the public package, just like we...
I'm a little confused, because I thought the open meeting law says everything before us has to be available by handout or on the website.
I, I'm not involved in Alexandria's determinations as to what she is posting on the website. So, but I share your understanding that everything that is subject, that is before the board is subject to open meetings law, unless it is exempt from the open meetings law.
Right, right.
What I hear Alexandria saying is that interpretation is that this is exempt from the open meetings law because it contains addresses of short-term rental properties, which is private information that is not foillable.
That is foillable.
It is foillable, but not...
Yeah, if it's not on the tax record of who owns these addresses by name, and they could be an LLC, so for giving a list of every single STR, that's just not information that we put out to the public without a FOIL.
I, I think if it's before us and the public wants to see it, we have to show it to them.
I'm trying to stay in my own lane here, so...
Yeah, I did consult with the clerk about this, too, and these addresses have been foillable only ever since we determined them, so...
Yeah, I don't see the difference, but if that's what you and the clerk have determined, and as long as it's available to the public under FOIL, then I don't think there's any damage to it.
Anyway, is there any, we have a couple minutes left.
In case it can be, except anybody who has the kids submit a FOIL request, they can get, so it's... All right, I want to see it. You can do that.
Yeah, the printouts. Let's spend the next, maybe we'll just spend the next few minutes going through those printouts.
I have a lot, which one are you asking for?
The LWRP ones.
The ones you may have any copies of?
Sure.
One has... There's two different.
Thank you.
Your original, and that's that, too.
Oh, I think I got it. Did I grab your original?
It doesn't matter, they're all...
I guess it doesn't matter. Thanks.
I wrote mine.
Okay. And you have your own, okay.
The only thing I did not grant is the full and live light resolution.
Yeah, we got it as well.
I guess you...
No, they're over there.
Send those around next.
When you're ready, right?
Okay, maybe people would want to at least take a look by reading this section one here. Policy one is a big one.
Just keep coming back at the other one.
We've had some real small ones, like for garage use and such, too. We've had some that we've just breezed over in like five minutes. See, some of my scribbled notes got copied on here. It's okay.
Got all your secrets.
But, everyone? Do you do it, skip going? There you go, there it is.
We'll close the...
Okay. I'll make a motion to close the workshop meeting and open our regular meeting.
I'll second.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Chair Bristow?
Aye.
Sorry, Member Shannon?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, um, so we have members of the public here tonight. Um, I wanted to discuss our review order again and what's before us on the agenda. Copies of our agenda should be out in the hall. Um, we have a review of a water consistency review of a short-term rentals law.
We could open the meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Just in one motion.
That's right.
Um, I guess we're gonna get into our conflict of interest disclosure moment. Anyway, um, I wanna put the short-term rental law first on our agenda, and we'll open this up for public comment. Um, when we get to that, um, I'm gonna make some announcement that our review of the matter is very narrow. Um, I'll get to that in a moment. Um, after the um short-term rentals law discussion, um, Fifty State Street is on our agenda, and we have a site plan review by the zoning, uh, sorry, the planning board, and then there is a variance review by the zoning board. Three Shane Place is listed on our agenda, but the applicant has requested that um we postpone hearing that application because they have additional information to submit, and I'm not really sure what, what they're looking for, but they've requested us to um defer the matter to the future on this closed date. Next, we have a conflict of interest disclosure. Does anyone have any conflicts of interest to disclose?
I do not.
No?
I do not.
Okay, I do not. Um, okay, so let me start by, I think let's um go over Three Shane Place until it'll be very quick, and then we'll get to the LWRP discussion. So since the applicant requested to defer discussion of it, um, I'll just make a motion to indefinitely postpone our review of Three Shane Place until such time as the applicant more fully completes their application. Second.
Number Loda?
Aye.
Number Shannon?
Aye.
Number Wilkes?
Aye.
Number Cook?
Aye.
Chair Brewster?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Um, so since we're not announcing a date, I think that's gonna need to get re-noticed if this comes back.
Yes.
Um, we did not get a date from the applicant, and they're not here, I presume. Okay, um, the next thing is uh the short-term rental law. Um, I'm gonna make a brief announcement here, that our purview is narrow for this. Um, we are doing a waterfront consistency review, um, a local waterfront consistency review of the short-term rental law. Um, and the main thing I wanna point out is the law was written by the trustees, and the nuances of policy are for them. We're not here to rewrite the law, we're not here to, to get into um all the nuances of the policy. What we're here to do is to look at how it um complies with the specific criteria on our local waterfront revitalization plan, which is a 200-page document or so, that's on the village website. Um, so the particular thing that we're focusing on is impacts in the waterfront area. So we're not looking at general impacts on other parts of the village. Um, so I just wanted to mention that. Now, I would like to go ahead and start with if anyone is able to give us an introduction on to the law. Is anyone from the trustees prepared to present anything tonight?
I don't think we.
I don't think we're supposed to.
It's not necessary.
Okay.
It's just, I mean, you're just reading the law and determining whether it is consistent with each of the policies in the LWRP.
Okay. All right, well, no one is here to present it. Uh, my suggestion is um there's good attendance from the public. Um, I think we should just open it up for public comment and see what people have to say. Um, so with that, we'll go some guidelines for public comments. Um, I read what our purview is. Um, if you want to speak, you can raise your hand. Uh, when you're addressed, uh, just state your name and address. Uh, we're gonna give people three minutes for comments, and um then we'll move on to the next person. Now, we can have people attending online, and there's plenty of people here in the room. Um, so we will open this up first, people in the room, then people online. If you are online and you would like to make a comment, there's a raise hand button you can click on, and uh we will announce you when it's time. Um, so with that said, um.
Just for clarif, I'm sorry, just for clarification, who's gonna be the timekeeper?
Me.
Okay.
All right, you can be the timekeeper, good. Oh, wow!
You're not going away.
Okay, um, so I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing on the waterfront consistency a review of the short-term rental law.
I'll second that.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Wilkes?
Aye.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Chair Brewster?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, um, would anyone like to provide a comment?
Can you just remind speakers loud and name and address, pick up residence?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think we already said that. Yeah, so if you wanna, if you wanna speak, please raise your hand, and then announce your name and address. Anybody? Okay. Yes.
That's what that was for, Steve.
I'm sorry?
The podium, I brought it up and scooped Steve.
Todd, period seventy State Street. Uh, can you clarify once you amend the purpose of this meeting by this board on the STRs? I know you mentioned the waterfront, et cetera, but in what capacity are you making a determination in or advising the board?
Yeah, I think, would you mind? So um, the Village Code, chapter 121, has a local waterfront consistency law in it, and it requires um anyone who's going to undertake an action in the waterfront area to submit a coastal assessment form and um ask the planning board to determine whether the proposed action is consistent with the policies of the local waterfront revitalization plan.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Um, I'm not sure all this stuff fits in, but generally, accommodations are versus far as a person appear to be a longtime resident of the village, and respecting the character of the storage and the basic character of residential property and community. Um, I think short-term rentals are in essence, by any other name, of what they are, short-term rentals accommodations. They are not residences, as opposed to long-term rentals, but you have a resident there for a long period, turning number one. Number two, um, and I've heard the thing about the value of the properties that people are having invested in or want to invest in. Uh, with that consideration, I think they really should be looking at the current residents or future residents of nearby properties of impact. So either some coming, coming in, do you wanna buy next to a short-term rental, or your market value is selling if you have a short-term rental next to you. Uh, also with that consideration is that um the. Here, and I talked about the impact of that, is that um the shortage of residential housing in the village. We know what that is, it's national, it's state, it's certainly local. And to decrease the probability of people residing there, whether by rental for a year or uh long-term, you're precluding that stock of housing, number one. And I've heard some of those that are in favor of short-term rentals argue, well, they need to bring their families back to visit all their family members. Well, that would be at the expense of current residents that want to remain here in your buying or have their next generation buy it, and so they can, and so I appreciate your considerations. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to make comments to the board? Okay.
Just one question.
Say your name and address, please.
Dave Marshall, sixty-seven South Main. With regards to the material that I was made aware of with regards to the workshop earlier, the one that identified the location of the short-term rentals that Alexandria had mentioned is foillable. Is it possible to obtain a copy of that this evening as a member of the public?
I don't think that's a question for our board, I think you'd have to talk to Andrea, to Alexandria about that. I don't think we have any, any jurisdiction over that.
No, no, and perhaps you guys connect that to the meeting.
Is it possible to obtain a picture of it here because I have to watch the remainder of the meeting remotely?
Well, it's on the table, sure.
Can I do?
You have your cellphone, why not?
Thank you.
It's.
It's usually a written request as a foil, but.
Well, the board's gonna be considering it tonight. I mean, the public's entitled to look at what the board is considering.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Did you have a comment, Steve, related to this?
Is it part of the hacker?
It's on the table in front of us.
It's not part of the public hacker, I think the function should go to the job.
We heard your comment, thank you.
Appreciate it.
I just wanted to come back and get that before I went on over. Back to everybody.
Okay, um. All right, now, um, is there, if anyone is online and would like to submit comments to us, um, you can click the raise hand button. Is there anybody online that would like to submit comments?
I have two hands up. I will start with the first person. Chris O'Connor, you're allowed to speak.
Great, thank you so much. Uh, again, again, thank you, my name is Chris O'Connor, my wife and I own a house at eleven Maple Street. Um, and, and I guess I first just want to say thank you for your time, but, but also, we didn't purchase the house um as an investment property. We both grew up in Pittsburgh, we both went to uh St. Louis School, met in kindergarten, actually. Um, our parents had lived in Pittsburgh, my parents have since passed away, and Mary's parents, um, we purchased, we purchased the house about eight years ago after my parents passed away, and, and, but we live in Fort Lauderdale, but, but we did it as a, as a way to help to take care of them. So, so we spend a, a significant amount of time flying up to Rochester, which we love in the village, which we also love, um, but we do so so that we can help to take care of my in-laws. Um, so it, it's truly not an investment. However, we do, we do, on a short-term basis, rent out this wonderful house as a mechanism to be able to come up and to take care of my in-laws. There would be no other way to afford staying at a hotel for the amount of days that we come and, um, to, to Pittsburgh. My in-laws are now at the Highlands, but still require a significant amount of additional care in addition to what's provided by the Highlands. So, but, so yet, yes, it is technically a short-term rental. We take care of this house like it's immaculate, I would love for anyone to come and see our home there. Um, but it would be such a financial hardship for us if we're not able to, in addition to spending so much time there, be able to rent it out to offset not even all of the cost to the house, but, but some of the cost to the house, and again, in order to be able to take care of my wife's parents, who are ninety-three and ninety-four years old. So this isn't a forever, forever thing sadly, because they won't be with us forever, but, but it's a very important thing for us, and the only way that we can do it, again, to take care of them, is to do some short-term rentals when we're not there. Thank you so much for your uh consideration.
All right, thank you. Is there another person that wishes to speak?
Another hand raised. M E C, you can unmute yourself to speak.
Hi, this is Peggy Brzee calling, um, I'm at eighty-one South Main Street. You kind of caught me off guard because I thought your agenda was gonna be, for the LWRP was gonna be later in the, in the meeting, but um I, I jotted down some notes, where some of them are questions and some of them are um my opinion about how we should proceed. I'm not sure exactly what your procedure will be for review of the proposed STR code under the LWRP. As crafted, the proposed code to regulate the number and location of STRs within the village appears sensitive to protecting residential neighborhoods by requiring owner-present, single-family residential rentals and not permitting multifamily residential STRs. Please seriously consider the detrimental, potentially detrimental impact on residential neighborhood within the LWRP of unregulated STRs. For village quality of life, it is much more consistent with the intent of the comprehensive plan and the proposed code to protect our private residential neighborhoods, homes owned and long-term rented or occupied. The LWRP consistently review process must keep in mind the intent of the comprehensive plan to protect our residential neighborhoods and to keep commercial intrusion at bay. Our small historic district is fragile. To allow hotels, uh, not uh even B and Bs, which are permit, are, are currently permitted by code, um, the single-family residential neighborhoods is um to allow this intrusion. I'd also like to ask if eleven Maple Street is in the LWRP. Do we know that?
I don't believe it is.
No.
Don't believe it is. So just the neighborhoods along the canal are what you're gonna be looking at in terms of um the LWR, impact of the L, uh, the code on the LWRP, is that correct?
Um, well, I'll answer this for clarification, but what we're, I'm prepared to do is to, uh, we have something like thirteen review criteria that we're supposed to consider. Uh, we're gonna read each one aloud and discuss them, and discuss um whether it's relevant to this proposed law, and if so, um, whatever we feel is relevant and concerns.
Okay, um, and also in terms of allowing uh short-term rentals in um the uh multi-use areas of the village, um, there doesn't seem to be any detrimental impact on, on that, um, on those rentals. So it's mostly looking at the residential, um, the impact on residential neighborhoods that I'm concerned about, and I'm sure a lot of people are. So thank you for listening.
Okay, um, is there anyone else that would like to speak?
No other hands are raised online.
Okay, anyone else in the room that can make any comments? Okay. Um, I'd like to, I don't know where this discussion is gonna go, so for now, I figure let's just leave the public hearing open. I don't know if we're gonna act or not tonight, but I think at this point, we should just go through the items one by one and start discussing them, um, and we'll see where that takes us. Okay, do you have the list there?
Let's take one pass down.
She's got one.
Yeah, she got one. She's good.
Okay, so for members of the public, um, we're just gonna go ahead and read this, um, each of these principles that were in policies that we're supposed to take a look at, and then we're in to discuss them. Um, so the first one is a big one. We are assessing the waterfront impacts, um, starting with number one here. Um, whether this proposed law will foster a pattern of development in the LWRP area that incorporate the design guidelines contained in section five of the LWRP, which enhances the community character, preserves open space, makes efficient use of infrastructure, makes beneficial use of the waterfront location, and minimizes adverse impacts of development. Takes advantage of the community's location on the canal to provide amenities for residents and visitors, and guides future development so that complements, not competes with, or detracts from the historic village. So that's number one. Um, we had a longer printout here that kind of went into policy one. Anyone wanna start with comments on this?
I mean, I, I think it largely doesn't impact this policy much. The one part that I thought may potentially have an impact is where it talks about, you know, providing amenities for residents and visitors. Um, that seems potentially relevant to the uh STR law. The rest of it, I, I don't see if the STR law has much of an impact on those other policies. But if other folks have reasons why, why it might, I'm happy to hear about it.
Well, I mean, we're, we're not talking about development here.
No.
So nothing about this law requires anything to be constructed.
Right.
Except maybe parking, which is something we can discuss. So the construction aspect of this is not particularly relevant. Any other thoughts?
I mean, to the extent that it allows short-term rentals within the LWRP, it does provide amenities for residents and visitors.
Yeah.
So that's consistent, or at least potentially consistent.
I guess that's something I have some questions about is I think it makes sense to have some type of lodging available in the canal area in particular. And one of my concerns was how many aspects of it are not being allowed. So, I mean, it kind of makes sense to me that maybe some of the waterfront properties should be given more consideration and specific handling in here. Because I could see that as being an asset, possibly, to have lodging along the canal. Right now, there is one, there is a hotel. I'm not even sure if the hotel is being prohibited by this law. But that's another matter.
Isn't really another matter, though? Because if this law is making the hotel illegal, unintentionally, I'm sure that's not the intent.
Exactly.
But if it is, then that has an impact on amenities for visitors.
This is short-term rentals.
Yeah.
And not hotels.
Hotel is a short-term rental.
Hotel is a... Hotel, a short-term rental is a residence that is being devoted to short-term stays.
Yes. And I'm sure that the trustees, nobody... Nobody on the board is intending to ban hotels, to ban the existing hotel. But if there's some concern about the language being overbroad, I think that's something that the trustees can address.
Yeah, I think they could, too. Well, here is their definition of short-term rental. Rental of a single-family dwelling or dwelling unit to persons in exchange for a fee or compensation, whether monetary or otherwise, for a period of less than 30 days, but not limited to rentals listed... including but not limited to rentals listed with companies such as Airbnb, BRBO. Month-to-month tenancies are not considered short-term rentals.
I mean, dwelling unit, I think that... I would understand that to mean not just a hotel room, but, you know, a residence. But, you know, if they could tighten that language up a bit or provide a definition, probably.
Or do you see a hotel of one or two rooms?
Yeah. A hotel can have one room.
Would you call that a hotel?
It needs a definition of it.
It'd be a moment of breakfast.
Yeah, what's the definition of that?
If they serve breakfast. Right, yeah. Maybe.
It's not even that. It's if the breakfast can be served. So I think it just has a kitchen and a dining table. Doesn't say the hostess to serve breakfast. Commit yourself. Anyway. Anyway, maybe we should... I could... I had a lot of concerns about the definitions. Maybe I'll write that up as commentary and send it to the trustees. I think that would be better, better use of time. I had a big concern about a lot of these overlapping definitions of different types of lodging. We open up their law. Oh, we actually have a printout of it, of where it's allowed and where it's not allowed. So they are allowing it along Chain Place. And that's along the canal. It's allowed over here, over where Talbot's is. And that's it. Does anyone have any thoughts on whether... Well, maybe this isn't for us. But is it important to these larger properties along the canal? Does it make sense to open it up to those? I guess hosted is still permitted. So if the resident lives there, it would be permitted.
Right.
It's just unhosted, isn't it? And maybe it's not for us to say. I'm just bringing it up as a thought.
I think it really seems more like a... That sounds more like a policy decision for the trustees than a consistency decision. I don't know. What do you guys think?
Okay. Well, as a suggestion, maybe we can send to the trustees. But in their includes... Their areas that they're targeting to allow these, I would suggest they consider the waterfront as something to specifically discuss and sort out on its own as to where along that makes sense. Rather than just go by district name.
Yeah, I think it makes sense to have them, you know, just as a comment for their consideration, which we're, I think, required to do. If we have anything, any suggestions. I think it's legitimate comment for their consideration to consider giving more freedom to short-term rentals within the LWRP area to be more consistent with the policy about providing amenities for residents and visitors within the LWRP.
So, Justin, are you anticipating development, like building, in those areas?
No, I guess the thought of this... Well, my reading of this was it's going to be mostly using existing buildings. But, you know, that does bring up the question of if this... As soon as someone gets a permit to do this, is it going to bring development pressures? I think there's something in here about one parking spot required per bedroom, not per rental unit, per bedroom. So I believe if someone wants to rent a four-bedroom house, does that mean they have to build four parking spots? So I guess the question is if people are fanning parking and to support these. I have some concerns about, you know, dotting larger parking lots throughout various districts for... just for these overnight rentals.
Well, I guess that does have an impact on the policy of making the waterfront more pedestrian-focused and pedestrian-friendly.
But a comprehensive plan, too.
And, yeah, that, too. Although I think our review is limited to LWRP. But, yeah, I think you're right on that.
Yeah, let me see in here. There was something about parking. So it says inside here...
Are you looking at the...
I'm not looking at their law. And I'm looking at Item 9 in their law on page 4. I don't know if everyone has a copy of it. It says, "Regulations and controls." There's a section in... a post-section in here. And I browse through here. And it says, "One off-road parking spaces not located on the lot's lawn or vegetated areas must be provided for each bedroom in the dwelling." And is that for hosted and unhosted? So does that mean every person that wants to do this has to build a four-car parking lot if it's a four-bedroom house?
Is it per bedroom in the house or per bedroom being rented?
It says for each bedroom in the dwelling.
Well, in the dwelling, yeah, yeah. That's true. That would be everywhere in the house.
And I don't know if that's if it's hosted or unhosted. It's unclear to me. But if we were to have lots of small parking lots going in all over the place in the village, that seems to clearly be an unattractive development pressure. But I'd really say I don't think that's the intended interpretation here.
I mean, I don't disagree with you. But that sounds more like something that's not limited to the LWRP. And I'm not sure we have any jurisdiction to address that. Unless there's some particular, you know, connection to LWRP on that.
Well, it would compact the LWRP area.
If we're putting up... Yeah, that's true. If we're putting up parking lots within the LWRP, that does have an impact.
So we're possibly paving green space. Okay. Any other comments anyone wants to make on this first one? Right now, I just want to talk about comments and we can get back to whether we want to find it consistent or inconsistent later. Does that sound reasonable?
Right, but you're also assuming that there is land available and zoning available for a four-bedroom house.
Yeah, I mean, if they can't build a four-car parking lot.
I mean, where would that... Where would that house go in the LWRP area? That's not zoned for.
What, for a four-bedroom house?
Yeah, in the LWRP area, where? A new house?
No, an existing house.
So you're saying if somebody in an existing house wants to do an STR...
Converts it to an STR.
Yeah, they'd have to build a parking lot somewhere.
I'm not sure. Maybe the nuances of this question is if it's a hosted STR, do they have to build a parking lot?
Correct, right. And that's maybe unclear right now, yeah.
Okay.
So how do you provide amenities for visitors?
What does that mean to you?
Lodging. How do you do that in the LWRP area?
You allow for lodging?
Or... And would an STR come under that? Yes.
Okay. Any other comments on this right now? We can go back to some of these. I think a bunch of these things we can find are not applicable. I just want to keep reading through these. Okay. Two. "Protect water-dependent uses. Promote citing of new water-dependent uses in suitable location and support for efficient harbor operation." I see that as being not applicable here.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Yeah.
All right. "Protect existing agricultural lands within the LWRP area." That'll be Policy 3. Again, I don't see this necessarily requiring any development. But what areas are agricultural land? I don't think any of them are in... Horace Farm is generally... Not generally in the LWRP area.
It's kind of back here, yeah.
So I guess that's... I'm going to say that's not applicable.
Yeah, I'd agree.
Okay, number four. "Promote sustainable uses of living marine resources in coastal waters." I think that's not applicable. Number five. "Protect and restore ecological resources, including significant fish and wildlife habitats, wetlands, and rare ecological communities." Again, not applicable. I think we'll have a few more. "Protect and improve water resources." I think that's in, like, water quality, which we're not affecting water quality. "Minimize loss of life structures and natural resources from flooding and erosion."
Yeah.
I think that's not applicable. Next one. "Protect and improve air quality in the LWRP area." I think that's not applicable. Do you agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay. "Minimize environmental degradation in the LWRP from solid waste and hazardous substances." I think that's not applicable. "Provide for public access to and recreational use of coastal waters, public lands, and public resources of the LWRP area." That was something I had some concerns about because if a rental is on the water, is that a waterfront property? It kind of makes sense to provide a connection to the waterfront property inside there. And none of the requirements address that. But they talk about parking access. And there's no discussion in any of the requirements for these of having any form of waterfront access of any type. Does that make sense?
Like if you're going to be renting out a property that backs up to the canal path?
Yeah.
Provide a gate.
Provide a sidewalk there, maybe, or a walkway, or it could be a dirt path.
Yeah, some kind of access. That would make it more consistent with the LWRP.
So that could be something that could be added is if the property is on the waterfront, that part of the review criteria could be seen if reasonable access is provided to the canal.
To the canal?
Absolutely.
Because you're... Yeah, I mean, you're making these... If you're journeying into an STR, you're making it sort of a semi-public space.
Yeah, I think it'd be cool to have both. Because you want to have a kayaker go tour the canal and wants to go up and stay at a place. That sounds kind of cool to me.
Yeah.
Will the board continue to commission any certifications from anyone online?
How about... Let's get through this. We still have the public hearing open. Maybe we can open up to more comments afterwards. Does that make sense, everyone?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. All right, so there's a comment on number 10 there. Let's move on to number 11. "Enhance visual quality and protect outstanding scenic resources." Again, if we're... I guess my parking lot comment is if we're requiring parking lots to be built.
Does that protect?
That certainly doesn't enhance visual quality.
You know, I wonder, does it really require parking lots to be built? Or does it just simply say if you don't have a parking lot, you can't do it? I think it's... I think that's the intent. It's done. I think the intent is to restrict. To restrict it. Yeah. Not to, you know, require parking lots to be built.
Okay, so they have to have the property and a parking lot. And if they don't...
That's what it sounds like.
Yes. It doesn't require them to build it. But if they want to do it, they have to do it.
As defined, you wouldn't be able to do it.
But it could be built.
Right. Has to come before our board and, you know, get it up on review and everything.
I don't think driveways... I think nobody reviews driveways. Steve, has anyone reviewed driveways? Does anyone review driveways?
Yeah, I review driveways. I think if we had a request for an expansion and that in most, probably 99% of cases in this village, because of lack of coverage, would come to be for this one.
And if it's a very large property, then maybe nobody cares in those instances. But, okay, so if someone...
I mean, I guess I got to wonder, is a parking lot a driveway?
Well, it needs a parking space.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I guess that's true. If you could just expand your driveway and call it a parking space, that's true.
One off-road parking space is all it says.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Moving on to number 12. "Preserve historic resources of the LWRP area." I think any development would still get reviewed by the Historic Preservation Board. And so it really has no change to existing.
Yeah, I don't think it has an impact.
So I think it's... Well, rather than say it's not applicable, well, maybe it is not applicable.
Yeah, I think it would be more like no impact and therefore consistent.
Okay. "All actions must conform to the State Environmental Review Act, State Environmental Quality Review Act." And my understanding... We got a copy of the speaker negative declaration from the trustees. So I guess we can say that is consistent with that. So that's resolved. Number 14. "All actions must adhere to village protective measures for environmental resource preservation." preservation. The Pittsford Environmental Guidebook and Green Pin to Pittsford Future. This is for the town of Pittsford, this is not the village of Pittsford, so that's not applicable. These review criteria apply to both the town and village. So, and number 15 here is perform dredging and disposal of soil materials, yada, yada. Not applicable for that.
Yeah.
It sort of sounds like this.
Okay, that leaves us, look, we had some comments on one.
One and 10.
One, 10, and 12.
And maybe 11.
Maybe, maybe 11, yeah. All right, so someone had requested to speak. Public hearing is still open. Do you want to just go through and see if anyone has additional comments? So if anyone, you said someone online wanted to speak?
Yeah, we have two people online. Take their comments, please.
Sure, let's take their comments.
Iphone Lily, she should be able to speak.
Thank you. Are you able to hear me?
Yep.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify regarding Shane, please.
Yeah, name and address, please.
Thank you. Lily Lanfier, 14 Jackson Park. Okay, I would just like to clarify about the LWRP Shane's Alley, and that is when the trustees discussed short-term rental in the LWRP Shane Alley, Shane Place area, the vision, if you will, the discussion was on existing, so it was adaptive reuse. And that is what the discussion, I just wanted to clarify that. So if you need clarification regarding development, that wasn't addressed. We were only envisioning existing buildings, the potential for being utilized as short-term rentals. Does that, does that clarify things any, or make things more confusing? In other words, as the trustees envisioned, short-term rentals in that area without, without, as by right, that it was envisioning existing buildings utilized as short-term rentals.
That's helpful comment, thank you.
Do you have any other comments?
We do, Chris O'Connor. You should be able to speak now. You just have to unmute yourself.
Sorry, 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 thank you. Again, Chris O'Connor, 11 Maple Street, I had spoken a little while ago, and I, and I apologize for this question if this is the dumbest question you've heard in a long time, but I guess I'm, I'm just, I'm confused. We're, we're just worried, is the, is the truth. We're worried that we're not going to be able to help take care of my in-laws, and if we can't do short-term rental and stay there 12 days out of the month, we won't be able to do that. But, and I've been listening intently, trying to understand like, okay, is, should be, we, should we be worried? Because it sounds like, given all the criteria that you've gone through, that it, we might be okay, or is that a different, different body that's going to just decide that short-term rentals should be banned from the village?
Our purview is looking at the waterfront criteria, and I know you're not in the waterfront, so that's not exactly what we're looking at, but you should, I think you'd be best directing your comments to the board of trustees.
Yeah.
They're the ones setting the nuances of the policy, they're deciding where to ban them, where to allow them, so we should direct there. We're, we're not getting into all the nuances of the policy.
Got it, okay, thank you so much. I appreciate all of your time and service, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Any other? Anyone else in the room want to make any additional comments? Mindy, did you say that we can mention things or look at things relevant to the comprehensive plan, or is that out of our purview?
My reflection is that one of the policies references consistency with comprehensive plan, and I would interpret that to be consistency of the short-term rental law with the comprehensive plan in the waterfront area, not throughout the entire village.
I wanted to bring up something relative to the comprehensive plan. And this is something I found on page 34 of the comprehensive plan, and this talks about, there's a few, I'll just read a few sentences here that is on that, that portion of the comprehensive plan. So in the comprehensive plan, it wants to encourage a variety of housing options in close proximity to commercial and mixed-use zoning districts, easy upper-floor apartments. It wants to expand the types of residential and commercial uses permitted in mixed-use areas to provide greater variety of amenities to residents. Want to support the provision of accessory dwelling units in owner-occupied, single-family dwellings on large lots capable of accommodating the increase in units, and providing relief for and protection of the character of non-conforming, single-family residential properties that predate the establishment of zoning regulations. And one of the things I wanted to mention is this whole accessory dwelling units thing, is there's some overlap in definition with the short-term rentals. And their definition of accessory dwelling unit is an accessory dwelling unit is a single, smaller, already existing residential unit independent of, located within, attached to, or on the same lot as an owner-occupied, single-family home. So I think this could be, it's meant to be like a little apartment in a garage, or it could be a little small building constructed, and it could, or it could, or it could be like a little suite attached in the building.
Right.
And I looked at this, and the comprehensive plan said that it is meant to be on large lots capable of accommodating the increase in units. And in the zoning code for accessory dwelling units, for both the, the, both accessory dwelling units and bed and breakfasts are limited to buildings that are 2,500 square feet and larger. So there's provision there that where these things will go in, there could be some increased use, but they're supposed to be only on larger properties. So the reason why I'm bringing this up is the question of hosted, short-term rentals on every property and, or every house in the village, when it seems the directive was to be a little more selective and to make sure the properties are larger and can accommodate possibly increased intensity of use. That's what I wanted to bring up. Anyone have thoughts, comments? It seems to me that this provision, there's some contradiction here, but I don't think short-term rentals are meant to necessarily contradict with accessory dwelling units. I can think of the accessory dwelling units as like more permanent housing is what it should be, but there's nothing in there that has a time limitation on it. If you're renting for a day, for 30 days or longer.
Plus, it's hosted.
Yeah, it's hosted.
Yeah.
But again, it's a hosted, it could be, an accessory dwelling unit could be a hosted short-term rental with a completely separate set of regulations and requirements.
If it's, if it's hosted, is it a short-term rental anymore? Isn't it a bed and breakfast? Isn't it a bed and breakfast?
Well, it says hosted short-term rentals are permitted.
That's in the comprehensive plan.
That's in the comprehensive plan. Do we have a copy of that around?
Susan has one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have one too, right here.
We'll have to take a look at that. You said you were looking at page 34, Justin? Yeah.
So is the concern that something that is prohibited as short-term rental in the waterfront area may be measured as an ADU?
I think one of my concerns, well, I, let me look at their definitions here. I guess my concern is opening village-wide, it seems to eliminate the restrictions that existed in code and are recommended in the comprehensive plan that they, that hosted ADUs at least. If they, and I don't see any reason why they can't be of, you know, a weekend rental as an ADU, it doesn't prohibit that, it may not be mentioned to do that. But this says it should be on larger properties that can accommodate it, but we had a public comment that opening it up village-wide, every single house in the village, whether it's a large property or a tiny property, could be concerned, but the comprehensive plan was more focused in saying, let's roll these out in larger properties where it's going to be less of an impact, again, if there's off-street parking, stuff like that. And so the implementation in the zoning code, when they were doing that, is ADUs are limited to 2,500 square feet or larger for a house, which is, the houses that are of that size, not all of them are on large lots, but there's not, they're in a fairly small area. A lot of them are on Main Street.
But I, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't, the way I read the STR law, it's not saying you get to build ADUs anywhere you want, I think it's more saying if you have an existing property that can, that can meet the requirements of the STR law, you are permitted, under these circumstances, you know, with, you know, subject to these regulations to open it up as an STR, but I don't think it's saying that you get to put an ADU anywhere you want to. Maybe I'm, yeah, maybe I'm...
But again, it's your fear that someone would put an ADU on their property, and then it would turn into a hosted, short-term rental?
Well, that's...
Or bypass a short-term rental by being a bed and breakfast or whatever. So they're significantly loosening up restrictions, so if someone could build...
I think that's a misunderstanding, but I don't think it's loosening anything. Maybe I'm wrong.
So this, it also seems like this, if you're looking for an inconsistency or a potential conflict, maybe that could be resolved by some more precise definitions in the, in the law itself, and that would be up to the trustees.
I think if they listed ADUs as for rentals of 30 days and longer, that would eliminate any concerns.
I guess what I'm not clear on is, yeah, sorry. I guess what I'm not clear on is the ADU doesn't say anything about the use of it, it's only about the physical structure, right? And an STR is nothing to do with the structure, it's, it's the use. So we're talking about two different things.
ADUs are alternative dwelling units.
It's alternative dwelling units, yeah.
Accessory or...
Accessory dwelling units.
Accessory dwelling units.
It is, basically it has a bedroom, kitchen...
Right.
And bathroom, at minimum.
It's like the in-law.
Yeah, well, that's kind of, that's the same thing as a dwelling unit for short-term rentals. Same definition, effectively.
So, so it's a definition?
Yeah, it's still a definition issue.
Yeah. I think, I think that's a legitimate, you know, critique that they could tighten up some of these definitions.
Well, if it's a confusing view, then it should be.
As I read it, I don't see any inconsistency because it seems to me that the STR law is only regulating use, not structures. And, and the ADU comments in the comprehensive plan are more about where do you put these structures than how do you use them? But, you know, so I, as I read, I don't see any inconsistency there, but I do, I take the point that it's a definitional issue that could be tightened up, and that's a, I think, a legitimate critique for the trustees to consider.
Okay, all right, well, we can move on. I don't think I have really any other concerns relevant to the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan says, other than accessory dwelling units, it said nothing about lodging or hotels or, or anything to that effect. But it does encourage a broad mixture of, particularly, I think it was noted in the mixed-use areas like Shane Place area. And this increases uses for...
It does say a variety of housing options, so I guess maybe there's some debate about whether an STR is housing versus lodging, but, you know, I think it's at least potentially consistent with the comprehensive plan.
All right, where do we go with that now? Is there anyone else having other comments?
We have one, I have news online.
Okay, sure.
Dave Marshall, you can unmute yourself.
Thank you. This is Dave Marshall, 67 South Maine, just with regards to some clarity on ADU, accessory dwelling unit. For the accessory dwelling unit to Jared's comment, it was a structure, it didn't change use. So whether or not there's an ADU that's permitted to be built or not to be built, is unaffected per se by the use case, which is the short-term rental. But the case of the short-term rental hosted means that you live in the property and you're there while you're hosting it. As a result, if there is an accessory dwelling unit, the person living in that unit would be the host of somebody staying in that unit as a short-term rental. It would not be a separate and distinct host on the property, but rather in the dwelling unit. Just for security. Thank you.
I think what he's saying is, okay, so if there is a second dwelling unit in there, as is the case with accessory dwelling unit, then it would not be a hosted one, because the host would have to live in the same... Well, if the host isn't in the dwelling unit.
Right, yeah, right, right.
They would have to be in.
Actually, that's not how I read it. I wonder if there could be some tightening of the language to make that clear.
All right. Here's my thoughts going forward. My thought is maybe let's see if we can get a summary of some of our discussions and send that as a memo or a letter to the trustees and see if they want to make any changes as a result of that, and keep, and continue discussion at our next meeting. If you have any thoughts about that, seeing Susan not liking that.
No, I just wonder about its practicality, if they're going to amend this legislation, you know, in a, in a timely enough manner, you know, for review and for it to come back to us. I agree that where there are problems with definitions and inconsistencies with, with this legislation, then that should be noted to them, that should be memozed to them.
Yeah.
What?
Please go on, I'll jump in when you're done.
I'm done.
I'm sorry, I was just, I wanted to point out that the waterfront consistency law requires you to pass along your comments with the consistency determination, not before the consistency determination.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So, yeah, I don't think we should make it a two-step process.
Maybe a one.
So are we going to be making a consistency determination and suggesting a change at the same time? How does, how does that...
I think that's right.
Yeah, so section 121.5 E1 says, "The planning board shall, along with its consistency determination, make any suggestions to the agency concerning modification of the proposed action to make it consistent with the LWRP policy standards and conditions..." the proposed action to make it consistent with the LWRP policy standards and conditions, design guidelines, or to greater advance them."
So it'll be, it'll be, the determination will be, if, if you do this, if you make these changes?
Not necessarily. No. You can say, for example...
We can do a conditional rule, right?
No, no. That's not what I'm saying.
It's only, it's only consistency, yeah. We don't approve it.
You make a determination, you make a determination of consistency one way or the other.
Yeah.
Whichever way you go. And you can also make suggestions about how to make the short-term rental law greater advance the policy guidelines of the LWRP.
So we could, we could say, it's not consistent, and here are the reasons. Or we could say, it is consistent, but we think to make it to greater advance the policy...
Correct.
We suggest these changes.
Exactly.
But it seems like some of the changes that would be suggested kind of preclude a consistency determination.
But we could say, it's not consistent.
Right.
And then give them our suggestions.
Exactly.
Right, yeah.
And then they can modify it.
Or not.
Or not.
Yeah. It's okay for us to go either way.
Yeah.
Consistent, not consistent.
Or we can, or we can take no action tonight.
Right.
Well...
I mean, if we feel like we need to deliberate anymore, we could do that. I, I don't know.
What, what do people want to do? Do you want to take, do you want to take an action tonight, or do you want to not take an action tonight? I'm, I'm perfectly happy leaving it open. And we can even schedule a special meeting and continue discussion.
I, personally, I, I think we'll probably have enough information to make a determination. I don't think, I don't think it's a question of needing more information. It's just a question of whether we think we need more time to, to consider or not.
I'd agree.
I think I, personally, I think I'm ready. What do you guys think?
I think I could.
Okay. I guess what I was hoping is if we had some, we had some discussion topics that were fairly minor, that, that could be, probably wouldn't be too hard to address. So if they're addressed, then those concerns are gone, and we can move forward. So I guess that's what I was hoping for. But we could either say it's consistent and, and suggest these would make it better, or we'd say it's inconsistent and say, these are concerns. Can you address them? I think that's what I've heard.
Yeah. I mean, I guess, sorry, Susan, go ahead.
If we determine consistent with suggestions, what power?
We have no power.
Do the suggestions have? None?
None.
Right, right. It's, it's, yeah, they're just suggestions.
Right.
I mean, personally, I, I don't think the issues that we discussed, and I'm, I'm willing to be convinced otherwise, but my, my initial thought on it is that I don't think that the issues we discussed make the short-term rental law inconsistent with the LWRP. So my inclination would be that we should find it to be consistent, but I think that we should pass on these suggestions. You know, Susan's comment is, I think, correct, that they're only suggestions. They don't have any, any force. But, I mean, if, if, if anybody thinks that that's wrong, that these issues are, you know, of such a magnitude that they make it inconsistent with the LWRP, then, you know, I'm willing to be convinced.
Well, I think after the commentary that we got, especially related to the parking, the fact that this is supposed to be effectively in-place housing stock, as opposed to development, addresses some of at least ten and eleven. But, yeah, I think it's more of a tightening of edge cases for the definitions that could be helpful to remove, I think, some of our convention.
Yeah.
So that would be a great suggestion as it relates to, make it, again, a little tighter as it relates to potential, not loopholes, but again, edge cases that could come up.
Yeah, see, I'm, I'm divided. I don't know exactly what to make of things here. As I see, okay, these things are relatively small issues. They're relatively easy to fix. But they're still, I have some concerns about them. And so I'm not sure where to go.
Well...
Justin, are your concerns to such a degree that you feel that it's not consistent? Or...
Well, I think the problem I have is, one of the problems I have is, the waterfront was completely disregarded in its entirety from the short-term rental law. And I think if they actually go in there and say, hey, where should we allow these, and should we make some amenities for our properties in the waterfront district, I think if they looked at it with that lens, some changes would get made. And that might benefit it. So I think that's one of the reasons why we're doing this, is to force the discussion of how will this impact the waterfront. I think zero thought has been put into the waterfront area, other than chain place and encouraging some excuses there.
Some adaptive reuse.
Adaptive reuse, yeah. I mean, there may be a reason for that. Most of the waterfront area probably doesn't have a lot of, other than chain place, doesn't have a lot of housing stock that would be affected by it, but I, it's, it's still a good point. And I don't know if we can say zero thought, but maybe insufficient, or...
Does the board want to take a comment or question, first one Q and A?
Sure, sure, sure.
Amy C., did you want to speak or ask, ask the question on your behalf? Let me ask the question.
Just wanted you to ask the question.
Where are the inconsistencies exactly? Is the question, who, who would address?
Yeah.
Taggy Brusley? Eighty-one, South Main Street.
I mean, are we doing question and answer, or are we doing a public...
I mean, it's not really a public comment.
Could you, you can ask people then. It's kind of been a Q and A on a view of the variety. So that was the question, though.
Understood. I'm just thinking that might be more appropriate as a public comment to the trustees...
Yep.
Than a discussion of the LWRP. That's all.
All right, so where are we going? Do we want to just talk about the three areas of concern and that we had mentioned earlier, and just take a roll call vote on each of whatever we think gets consistent? Want to do that? Are we acting on this slate?
Personally, I, I think I'm prepared, but, you know, I don't want to be...
I don't want to arrest everyone else.
Yeah, exactly. If you guys, if somebody else feels it, you want to consider it more, then I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I'm good.
So, no answer? Voting or not?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Let's go through then number one. Okay, so the numbers that we had commented on is one, ten, and eleven.
Right.
And one was a big one, talk on, and one of the things was takes advantage of the community's location on the canal to provide amenities for residents and visitors. Number ten, we had talked about access to the canal. And number eleven, there is concern about visual impacts of parking that could be encouraged by these. So that was a brief summary on it. So number one, any other commentary on, on that from anybody? Questions, or just want to say, or just want to take a roll call vote?
Yeah, I guess that's the question. Does it take advantage of the location on the canal to provide amenities?
It's, yeah, there's, other than the chain place area, first of all, unhosted rentals are, I think, forbidden from these areas, even if the properties make sense. And hosted is allowed everywhere.
Yeah. Yeah.
And again, hosted is allowed, not just on large properties, but any property, apparently. I'll just say where I'm at, is I'm thinking this, I, I consider this inconsistent, just due to the lack of, mostly due to the lack of focus on waterfront and actually trying to enhance the waterfront and considering that as a specific thing in the regulations.
So when we look at where STRs are allowed? Where is that?
Well, unhosted are allowed everywhere.
Right, where you live there, yeah.
Yeah. Well, no.
No.
They're allowed, effectively, tall bits area, down near Northfield Common. Oh, wait a minute. Maybe I don't understand something in here.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to say, those are unlimited. So I think that's actually, they gave consideration to that.
No, it says, "The number of special use permits available to be issued by the Board of Trustees shall be limited to the following number in the following districts. The hosted short-term rentals do not require a special use permit."
Right, right.
So... So it says, "The short-term rental of hosted owner-occupied, single-family dwellings is permitted." Period.
Yeah. So that's allowed everywhere.
So it's allowed everywhere in the village.
Yeah.
Well...
Again, I had the concerns about that being somewhat inconsistent. Well, maybe it's not as inconsistent with the comprehensive plans I had thought, but the comments in the comprehensive plan were, rather than allowing it everywhere, it should be on larger properties where it would be less of a detriment and less of an impact, or better, if it's a little higher intensity use, you're better able to handle it.
No, that's so vague.
It is.
Larger property, you know, small properties, small, you know...
Yeah.
Accessory dwelling unit. I, I just think that's hardly useful.
I mean, my inclination would be to find it consistent, but to suggest that, you know, some greater consideration be given.
That's fine, if that's where we want to go.
But I'm only one person.
Well, maybe this is one that we'll have different opinions on. Okay. Do you want to just call a roll call vote on number one?
Would we be voting on consistent or inconsistent?
Correct.
And then, and then we would propose a second motion for any suggestions that we'd want to add to that?
I, I think let's go through, and let's talk about consistent or inconsistent, and we can talk about if we want to send comments later.
Well, comments would be the findings, right?
Comments would be the findings. We can even do a write-up offline, like we usually do.
I think we should, yeah.
Right.
And do that in a meeting, so, so. All right, um, do you want to call a...
Are these motions, or is it a poll?
Poll.
Poll.
This one.
Okay. And you want me to poll?
Consistent or inconsistent.
Okay. So we're forming inconsistent. If we just poll one...
No, we just want to say, Pearson could say, "Consistent or inconsistent."
Okay. Number, starting with number one. Number what?
Consistent.
Number what?
Consistent. With some comments.
Jeremy Strah?
Inconsistent.
Number what?
Consistent.
Number Janet?
Consistent.
Okay. Let's go on to number ten. Okay, number ten was, "Providing for public access to recreational use of coastal waters, public lands, and public resources." And I guess I had a doubt. There was concern about access to the canal, but the reading of this has no impact on coastal waters, and has no, no impact on public lands, and no impact on public resources.
Unless you consider the land next to the canal to be a public land.
But it's not going to be a short-term rental.
And it's also...
It's owned, yeah.
Well, sure, sure.
And I, I had some concerns about providing access paths, but I think that's a relatively minor thing. So I, I don't know. Do you want to do a, do you want to have any more commentary, or do you want to do another roll call again?
I think I'm ready to vote unless somebody else wants to comment more.
Number what?
Consistent.
Number what?
Consistent.
Jeremy Strah?
Consistent.
You said consistent?
Yes.
Thank you. Number Cook?
Consistent.
Number Janet?
Consistent.
Okay, number eleven, "Enhancing visual quality and protect outstanding scenic resources." Comment before was whether this would encourage parking lots. And then the response to that is, this was mostly for existing properties, and there's not a whole lot of places to construct a parking lot.
Right.
Getting ready.
Yeah.
Ready to vote? Number what?
Consistent.
Number what?
Consistent.
Jeremy Strah?
I'll say consistent with this.
Number Cook?
Consistent.
Number Janet?
Consistent.
Okay, and then the others, we essentially said NA four, except for number thirteen, we said was consistent.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so that was our poll. So I think the next matter is to make a, I guess I will make a motion to find the short-term rental law to be consistent with waterfront consistency standards. And then we can add additional commentary later and send that to the... Okay, so I'll end my motion to say, and then we will send a commentary to the trustees for suggestions for improvements.
Well, that will be part of your consistency determination...
Right.
If you want to do it, pursue it to the code.
Yeah.
It says that, "Along with your consistency determination, make suggestions..."
Okay, so we leave it out of the...
"...of the modification of the short-term rental law to greater advance the LWRP policies."
Okay. So I guess then we will strip comments out of the motion. So the motion would be to find the short-term rental law consistent with waterfront consistency standards for the reasons discussed. Period. Second.
Number Janet?
Aye.
Number Cook?
Aye.
Number Loda?
Aye.
Number what?
Aye.
Jeremy Strah?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Could you just read them again?
Sure, yeah. So it says that, "The planning board shall, along with its consistency determination, make any suggestions to the town board..."
Right.
"...concerning modification of proposed short-term rental law to make it consistent with the LWRP policy standards and conditions, design guidelines, or to greater advance them."
Right. So we just determined consistency.
Right.
And so now it's...
Suggestions.
Without incorporating the suggestions into that motion?
Well, there could be a second motion. If you have suggestions as to how the short-term rental law could... could greater advance the policies of the LWRP.
I'll just make a motion to share suggestions with the trustees, and we will work on this letter offline and take it up at some time in the future. That's what I'm thinking of doing.
So you're saying you're going to do that as individual citizens of the village and not as board members?
Well, I think it's more, what do we, normally we, we review the language and all of these things. So I don't think, I don't think...
Yeah, that's okay, yeah. Yeah, like, we get the draft resolutions and we work on the wording and the suggestions based on the discussion we held today.
So the motion, I guess the motion would be to forward, I'll make a motion to forward suggestions to the trustees.
I wonder if maybe we should...
Well, I'm confused. What are the findings, then? Isn't that what the findings? Wouldn't all these comments be in the findings?
This would be in addition to the findings. The findings really are just, is the short-term rental law consistent or inconsistent? And you've already found that it's consistent.
Yeah, no.
But it sounds to me that the board has some ideas as to how the short-term rental law could be changed or modified to greater advance the policies of the LWRP.
And I think maybe we should identify...
Right, I do.
A bold list of what are, what are the suggestions that are going to be around if we put it all together and then you just try to query it out of our discussion.
Do it here, now.
This is our job, not your job.
Okay, right, so let's just do that now.
Right, and so to Justin's point about how the waterfront has been ignored, that would be like number one.
Yeah.
Consider the waterfront in locations and review standards.
Yeah, and I would, I guess I would say, consider giving greater flexibility or greater, fewer restrictions perhaps, to make them more available within the waterfront district as opposed to the village generally. To be more consistent with the policy, policy number one, to provide amenities for residents and visitors within the...
And add the comprehensive.
Add the comprehensive, yeah.
Okay, I'm just trying to note, okay, consider providing more access to short-term rentals in the waterfront area. Is that what we said?
To improve consistency with?
Yeah.
Number one. And the comprehensive.
Okay, there's also, consider fixing the language around ADUs.
Yeah.
Fixing definitions and language about ADUs to separate them.
Yeah, the comment that... Did we want specific language related to access to the waterway?
Yeah.
I think that's a good suggestion.
Consider adding a review criteria to waterfront, to waterfront access and amenities where appropriate.
Yeah.
Provide, right.
Yeah. As part of the permitting process, I guess, is how it would work. The other one that I thought maybe we should add is to address the parking issue. Because the clarification, I think, were helpful, but they're not in the law. So I think that there should be some clarification in the law to make it clear that they're not requiring anybody to build any new parking lots or anything.
Yeah, to dispossess unexisting.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I would say, update parking requirements to discourage construction of new parking lots. That's what I've been thinking.
And again, these are only suggestions. You know, they can take them or leave them or modify them, or, you know.
Because I don't know what the, I don't know what the purpose was for them to discourage that, but just add the clarification.
Yeah.
Because right now, it's not in there.
Yeah.
So, if we had a question, someone else could easily have the same question. So, my notes here were, more access to STRs in the waterfront area, fixing language when definitions of ADUs, add a requirement for waterfront access and amenities where appropriate. And then, parking. Those are the four suggestions. And, oh, there's a mention about, any thoughts about these on larger properties versus smaller properties?
Not without definitions.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, let's hope they fix, say, you...
Yeah.
Or say, you know, please quantify.
Yeah.
What that actually means, what is large, what is... Well, that's in the comprehensive plan, it's not in the law. It's up for the law to...
Right.
To quantify. And our existing law has quantified that for bed and breakfast and ADUs, a house need to be 2,500 square feet or larger. This says nothing about property size or house size. Or ADU size.
Okay, so, the next round for the comprehensive plan.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong with asking them to consider that, but I don't think that that's necessarily a LWRP issue. It's more of a general comment for the law, and so... And I would add the ADU definition to that list as well.
Yeah, we had that in here, fixing language and definitions of ADUs. So again, there's only four comments.
Okay.
Okay, so, I'll make a motion then, that we include these four comments along with our consistency determination and our findings to be submitted to the trustees.
I'll second that.
Number what?
Aye.
Number Loda?
Aye.
Number Sharon?
Aye.
Number Cook?
Aye.
Chair Bristow?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Alright, well, I think we're finally done with that. Anything else, well, okay. Thank you, everyone, for...
To close the hearing?
Yeah, I'll get some more motion.
I guess we probably should have done that before we go there, right?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Number Loda?
Aye.
Number Janet?
Aye.
Number what?
Aye.
Number Cook?
Aye.
Chair Bristow?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, and if anyone is confused, does not adopt the law. So the law is still pending.
This is for the trustees.
Alright, after that lengthy thing, now we're on to 56th Street. Steve? Yes, Steve?
Is the applicant asked to table your application for the...
Yes. Well, we have a...
Well, we should hear public comments.
I don't, I don't have a problem hearing public comments. Public hearing is still open.
Are the applicants?
Applicants have you.
I don't...
Do they need to be here for us to hear public comments?
I think the, the code says, I believe, the applicant is...
As long as they had notice.
Inspired to...
They have, they have noticed. They are now required to be here to be at the...
I absolutely would like to hear comments and people sent through this.
People are here. I don't think we should send them away without a chance to speak.
Okay, so, and should we refrain from further discussions or deliberations?
Yes.
I think we should, yes.
So, okay.
Just receive public comments.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, alright, well, the public hearing is open, so we will allow public comments. So raise, you know, like, we know the drill, we already announced it. So, raise your hand, stick your name and address, make a reasonable comment, and there you go.
Alexandria, do you... Yeah, yeah.
It's more official.
Okay, it's more official, you have this better. Hi, my name is Bobby Han, I'm at 56th Street, building 10. I am, I own two businesses. Behind, or in the building where the proposed location is going, behind Ocean. So there's Ocean, and then I own the first floor building, or rent the first floor space and the second floor space. I've owned this space since 2021, and I took the second location in February of this year. I have a spa and a boutique. So, my concerns for this dumpster-walking kind of building are, number one, that organs and sex currently, as it stands, whenever I take and get my trash back to the dumpsters now, it's disgusting. Like, there's sludge all over the ground that leaks out beyond the dumpster enclosure part. There grows, you know, bugs, rodents. I have been in this space, like I said, for most three years. I have had absolutely, besides a, you know, fly or something like that, nothing in there that, you know, would affect my business by dumpster. Being that the field is pebbly about 50 feet away from our building, I can only imagine what the field mice would do coming constantly towards our business. Right now, also, sorry, I'm like a little vigorous. So, also, where they want to put the dumpster in our area of Northfield Commons is where we have the most congested area of businesses. And in that little, like, circle area, and we also have the least amount of parking right there. Where the proposed dumpster is going to go is going to take up two to three parking lots. So they say two to three, so let's call it three. I don't know.
Just a quick question, there's parking spaces behind the buildings?
That's correct, there's four parking spaces.
There was, in fact, four parking spots approved there. You have to look at the old one.
Oh, in the old one, yeah. Yeah, you're right.
That's the problem with the new one, it doesn't show those parking spots back there. Keep going.
Oh, okay, so, yeah, so there's four parking spots, and they're, you know, saying that this would take up two to three parking lots. Our parking is so limited that this would not only use our...
Yeah, this one.
...space, but also the boutiques, cafes, all that. And the mission is that the smell, the trash, the loose trash that's always all over the ground, everything that comes with it in a dumpster. I don't know where there's a good proposed spot to put this dumpster, but right now, at least where it is, it's tucked away in the back of Northfield Commons where none of our patrons have to see it, smell, deal with it, anything like that. Hold on, maybe it has got loose trash, the liquid, sludge. I'm going to get a good copy of this too, because I'm kind of like scrolling through it. Yeah, we talked about the parking, oh, also, this is a huge one for me. My, sorry, my, the second story spa, where people come to me to relax. Some people, it's the only chance that they get to relax. I don't know if you've ever been around when a dumpster comes to a commercial area, but there's a lot of beefing, they pick up the truck, they slam it down. So in addition to the weekly pickups that will be disruptive to the clientele, both of my, I have three treatment rooms. Two of the treatment rooms are on the backside of the building. So in addition to me and my employees and my clients getting disrupted on a consistent basis from, or weekly basis from the trash pickup, all of the other patrons constantly dumping their trash in there and coming back on a consistent basis will also disrupt my business as well. I just really believe that, for all the reasons that I've talked about, that it will directly impact my business technically and financially as well as disrupting my businesses.
Thank you.
Can I do this with you?
Sure.
Yeah, please. And do you have any suggestion for another location?
I mean, I don't know exactly what's available, but I mean, just, it wouldn't be anywhere where our patients will continuously see. I mean, there's loose trash that falls over, the dumpsters half the time are overflowing. When the, when the restaurants dump everything in there, it's literal a little sludge. Like, me and my employees are like this, walking into it because you don't want to get back into your car after with all the crap that's on the ground. So I don't know somewhere where it's not going to be seen or affected by the patients in Northfield Commons.
With a different construction of the dumpsters, something enclosed?
It's enclosed now, but the sludge dripped out beyond it. And the door is closed too. No one uses the door, it's supposed to be there.
So there's a maintenance issue?
Yeah. I just don't, I feel like there are people walking around, the smell would be everywhere. I mean, it is definitely, dumpsters are very disgusting. And you have a lot of people who park directly behind our buildings, even on the dirt path part of it.
Yeah, so, we also have heard complaints from residents who don't like the dumpster in their backyard, and they hear the trash truck coming at five in the morning, and it wakes them up and empties it, and so, nobody wants a dumpster next to them. So, you don't want it there, they don't want it there, there needs to be a trash somewhere. So, that's an issue. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Lynn Cole. I live at 66th Street, State Street, so I'm actually right over the dumpster.
The current dumpster.
The current dumpster, which doesn't bother me that much. I'm more bothered by the people who smoke hot when they're taking the garbage out, actually, than by the smell of the dumpster. But, anyway, when I look at the Pittsburgh criteria for an area variance, there's five criteria. That will the undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties? Can the benefit be achieved by another method? And is the requested variance substantial? Will it create an adverse impact on the physical and environment conditions of the neighborhood? And so, my concerns are based on those things. So the addition that has been proposed will extend from a small white garage that is currently right behind 68th State Street all the way to the current abode building, which is 64th State Street. And so that completely blocks the back of my property, and the height, at least that I am understanding, would completely block any view out the back of my property. So I have pictures, I emailed, I don't know if they were received, showing, you know, I've really done a lot of work on my property to make a really nice backyard and be able to even see out to the trees, both from my house and to see out to the field and the kind of nature I got from my house and from my yard. And play up a building there that would completely block that and would also block our access. We regularly use the gate that goes from the backyard that my family goes and accesses the buildings in Northfield Commons, and so that would be completely blocked off. And so, based on those, on those things, I would, you know, I have opposition that it would really change my property value. I do think there are possible alternatives that white garage that's on one side, you know, could be extended forward or in another direction that then wouldn't really impact any of the properties that are along State Street. I think there's other options that could be considered that wouldn't impact the properties.
Okay, thank you. I had a question. You were concerned about the height. Do you think there's changes that could be made to the height that would address your concerns?
I think if it was, you know, clearly only a single story, like, similar to the current garage, and if it didn't completely cover the whole, you know, didn't connect the two buildings so that I could still get out the back of my property, I would feel better about that. But if it's proposed to be similar to the height of the abode building, that's, you know, essentially a two-story height that would completely block any view out the back.
Okay, so let's say it had a flat roof, or shorter, some other meaning.
Yeah, if it had, if it had a flat roof and it was a single story similar to the garage, that would be more acceptable.
Okay, thank you for the comment. Oh, I did have one question for you. Is there, do you have any agreements with the 56th Street for access to that side of their buildings for maintenance?
No. So what kind of, like a...
So, I mean, they, if, the parts of it that are on your property line, I don't know if anything is currently, they have to do maintenance and work on them and stuff like that, and through your property?
No, they don't go through my property, they... No, they don't go through my property, they go through the Northfield Commons side.
Is that your fence?
It is my fence, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the space between the fence and the building?
Yeah.
I don't know if that's your property or theirs.
There's a 12-inch easement.
There's a 12-inch easement for access?
Not for access, it's a 12-inch easement.
For maintenance?
It's just, there's not a complete survey that shows a 12-inch easement between the properties.
Alexander?
Nina and I just wanted to ask.
Can I know that 62th State Street?
Thank you.
Is that an easement or just space?
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, not.
Thank you, Art Curious and the State Street here. I have a material which is supplemental to the material submitted to this board, I think it's actually the second.
Okay.
So I can have this and each member. And if I might just give a high-level overview and explain my thoughts on this, as well as what's on those documents there. And I understand it's just public comment, you may not have commented, which is a question now. So please welcome you for the opportunity. I appreciate the fact that this additional recent submission has more information than the original. I know that's my statement, any of the elevation, although I think it's lacking in the real elevation, as well as a lot of different items on this. So if I'm correct, if I'm wrong, once you're ready for any of that, if you're interested or if you're trying to clarify. But I don't believe the survey information such as existing and proposed setbacks or proposed building, it's good to see that we find there's a major site plan versus a minor relative to the threshold components for foot. So this one is about percent of the existing building. And till in point 66th State Street, the white building is covered, there's building zero on your plans.
The building O or zero?
Zero, I mean, or O, I'm sorry, O. And building varies to, if you will, height structure, because my understanding it's really just a single-floor operation, open to the ceiling. So it looks like, my understanding, it's a single-story, one-floor showroom, et cetera, open to the rafters. Could be long in that, but I appreciate it.
We don't have any interior, right?
Well, as I'm saying, that's part of the issue here, I think it's incomplete. You should know if it's a two-story use or a one-story, and I think it's one-story, even though the height is equivalent to a two-story and it's gable. O is a single-story, clearly, and you can see that on the polygraph, I have a rough picture. So a lot of questions, setbacks, existing, proposed, parking, parking ratios, total square footage for Northfield Commons, ratio of parking in the building, none of that is recently gone here, all critical planning board, zoning board considerations. I also state two, the section of the code, and there's a check sheet, once again, the first sheet from my district site plan. Secondly, I think it's an area variance, doing first is a lot line variance. Further advances to a setback, I don't think lot line variance are in the code, I think it was misadvertised, but I'm not going to get caught on it, I'm technicality, I just point that out. So for village code, I have a 22.7, mention requirements, a minimum rear yard for primary structures, either 15 or 35. The larger requirement shall apply to residential and non-residential use adjacent to a resident use for a district, e.g. 66th State Street. Hardship requirements as listed on this call, I think are critical. And then certainly last but not least, on the particular plan, I take an extract from the village comprehensive plan adopted 2019, where it accommodated a mix of commercial and residential use of Northfield Commons area. Careful consideration would be given to transit, position and treatment to protect the existing residential homes of letting the common. Additionally, the scale of the structures and intensity used shall be modified in Northfield Commons area to ensure the greatest level of compatibility with adjacent neighborhoods. As far as parking, I questioned, no parking limits are shown on here, no pavement, and I questioned who installed the parking on our community land. Dumpsters, why not, if you're allowing cars on that, allow a dumpster on that plan is not purposefully, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Interesting questions if you have. But it's still the checklist read through the plan markup, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, just as a general comment, what we had discussed at our last meeting was we would start talking about what additional information we wanted to complete the application, but the applicant is not here. So I'm not going to have that discussion today. We will consider your comments in here and what's relevant, we can incorporate in that conversation when we do have it.
And real quickly, B is close, I think 12 inches, 12 inches or plus or minus to the line. If that's the case, always greater than that, I might be ending it. So there is a distance separation in certain of the plan, about 10 inches.
By the way, did you see these? These are the renderings that came in today.
They're on the website.
I missed it because I thought it must be light, all painted package, and the only one I saw was the one I submitted there.
There are a few.
Is it here that we are all visiting?
Yes.
Okay, I missed that somehow.
Well, that's new.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Good evening, John, 62th State Street, what hurts? I've been here before about this property and I first want to state that I have absolutely no issue whatsoever with both. My property backs right up to their front door and they're wonderful neighbors, I have no problem with them. I have a problem with the administration of these two applications. The ZBA application has 11 application fields empty, it weren't filled out when it was accepted. The applicants requesting a lot line variance, there's no details. Now, the drawings I printed out was probably four or five days ago. So if they got new information, when I read this, there was no information as to what that variance was. The planning board application has eight application question fields left blank, and it was accepted. If you look at the specific drawing inconsistencies that I saw, sheet number one, four of the eight adjacent neighbors are listed incorrectly. And I think that's something that, you know, due diligence would dictate. The proposed rear dumpster, where do they flow to, there should be a detail. Sheets S2 and S3, they don't contain the same building information sheet number one, and it's very difficult to, you know, switch between drawings to refer to things. And there's no landscaping sheet or proposed landscaping for even the addition of the dumpster corral. And probably the most egregious administrative issue is the continued advancement and acceptance that this is a site plan. In my 30 years on planning boards, I have never seen a site plan that doesn't have signature blocks on it, that doesn't have details, you've got no landscaping plans. You should have details for all of the drains on this property, you should have details for all of the lighting on this property, you should have parking details, and none of that exists. I was an employee of this village when this applicant bought this property and he absolutely refused to do a site plan. And yet this board continues to allow improvements on that property and let things happen without a site plan.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Okay. Any comments from anyone? We're not really going to deliberate on that.
We're not, yeah.
So the discussion of what is needed to complete the application will happen another day.
I want to check, is anybody online?
Yeah, is there anyone online?
There are, but no hands raised.
If anyone online would like to make a comment, please click the raise hand button and listen to what I mean. Okay, Steve, you said the applicant couldn't be here tonight. Do you know, can they make our next meeting? I guess the question is.
I think they were here earlier, they had to leave.
They had to leave, okay. Do we know when the applicant's next available?
The only thing I can do is reach out and find out what, you know, they both, the owners left and charred it up and said they wanted to take their pay for that. So what I would do is I'll reach out tomorrow and find out what her plan is.
Okay, so I guess then we'll just carry us over to the next regular meeting, is my thought. All right, so then I will make a motion to keep the public hearing open and continue discussion at our next regular meeting.
December 4th.
Thank you, which is December 4th at 6:30 PM.
Second?
What is that?
December 4th at 6:30 PM.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you very much for coming, sorry you had to wait so long in the beginning, but.
We appreciate that.
Thanks.
Member Rochelle, I, member Shannon, and member Brooks?
Aye.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Chair Rysta?
Aye.
Motion classes?
Okay. That's it for the agenda. Oh, minutes. I have no energy to deal with minutes. I assume that's a.
I don't think there's anything urgent, right?
Yeah, I, I, I.
Well, that's 5 State Street, you know, it's close, the, um.
Yeah.
It's nice and close, uh, it keep that energy for it.
Do we want to schedule a special meeting to go over those, because they don't have any interest in that? Do we have any new applications for next month?
No.
Nothing else.
Okay, so it'd be just.
The line, just put it.
Yeah.
Okay, so it'd be just 50 State Street. Okay.
Well, you already made a decision on it. Did everybody have a chance to review?
Five, six, seven, eight.
Right. Did everybody have a chance to review the?
The two that I sent out on Monday.
The two resolutions, the area.
I have not yet. I actually did not review your revisions, Mindy, but I looked at the original ones and I'm sure there's nothing I'll be concerned about, but.
I saw they read it, yeah.
I was good with it. Well, I don't want to rush you guys, if you're not ready to.
Well, what do you want to do? Do you want to take, if people are generally okay with the resolutions?
I can check it.
I have them right there, they're actually not.
They're word in the pack, okay.
I did get a lot of stuff today, so.
I'm a privileged, so.
So let's do it.
My work products, right.
Right.
Let's do it.
Good point. Yeah, let's do it.
They're the last two in this packet. It may be helpful that you can take the rest for our next meeting if you want to defer the remainder of the minutes, but there are two that I'm just talking about in the pack.
Oh.
Yeah, there, it's one paperclip pack for a person.
And then this also are revisions?
That's yours, paperclip.
Yeah. Okay. Got a little turned around.
Did you take something over, member Cook?
No. This is what?
That's what I stress.
What was handed to me by Shannon.
Yeah, it was like.
Shannon.
Yep. So what?
I don't know, I'm a little turned around.
So it's the last. They don't, I mean, these are just copies of something that I already stacked.
That was something else? Okay, all right. All right, the last two.
Okay, so you have the last two and.
There should be resolutions outside here, maybe.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't there for that one. So I will.
You weren't, oh, you weren't here at this meeting, okay.
So I'm not on the vote, so I'm assuming, I mean, that was.
Because Mike Reynolds was there, okay, our alternate was there.
Yeah.
Okay, so what was the first one? Was lot coverage. So let's go through number 17 first for lot coverage. So I'm taking a look at A. Okay, any thoughts on A?
Yeah, I have some thoughts, so. I noticed that there's some of the whereas's that were in 18 that didn't make their way to 17. So.
Okay, do you see they're different?
Yeah, so what I would say is that I would suggest that we cross out the second and third whereas's on resolution 2014-17 and replace it with the second, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth whereas's from the draft, resolution 2024-18.
So in essence, we copied all of the whereas's from the second one over and replaced all of them except the first one.
Correct.
Okay. All right, I'm fine with that. Anyone have suggestions on A?
What is A, 18?
17. That starts with the site will be more attractive if the front yard uses a patio instead of a parking lot. Some of the language here is maybe a little choppy, but I don't think that's meaningful in one way or the other.
Yeah, I took a light touch on yours, but if the board wants, I can certainly improve on it.
Well, minor wordsmithing, I don't think is important. That's just the main thing, is do we need to have any changes, new findings, stuff like that?
I don't think so.
Is there anything, Mindy, you think is important to add or tweak in?
No, I added the stuff that I thought was important, deliberations.
I mean, we, yeah.
That's one of your copies. That you guys are looking at, that's your copy, right.
Yeah.
So, so this? Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're good with that. So B, I think that's pretty straightforward. C. The one comment I had is there is a comment sent to us that we should be looking at substantial, not relative to the current conditions, but relative to the existing law, what the law says.
Yeah, that's a legal issue, not a findings issue.
Okay.
So I don't think it needs to be a need findings item.
Okay. Um, does it matter to add the comment about every commercial property along State Street is over the 60% zoning requirement? Or head above?
Yeah, you have to say A.
Yeah, I think copying that comment to C might be... Does that make sense or is that not?
I have no problem with that.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll copy the last sentence from A and add that onto the last sentence, uh, of the end of C. So that's the statement about every commercial property along State Street is over the 60% zoning requirement. Okay, I'm okay with D. Any other thoughts?
Okay with D, okay with D.
I don't have a problem with F. Anyone?
No. Yeah.
Yeah.
She was good.
Okay. Alright, then I'll make a motion...
But go, I just, one other change I would propose.
Okay.
I can't touch something without changing it, I'm sorry. Now therefore it is resolved by the zoning board of appeals of the village of Pittsburgh. Now therefore it is resolved by the zoning board of appeals of the village of Pitts...
It is resolved that...
That, it is resolved that...
Mm-hmm.
This areas.
This, um, it resolves that the zoning board of appeals of the village of Pittsburgh affirms the 2023 area variance for the reasons stated above. Period.
Would you read that whole thing?
Yes.
Now therefore it is resolved that the zoning board of appeals of the village of Pittsburgh affirms the 2023 area variance request for the reasons stated above, period.
And there are no follow-ups?
Right, right.
Period, okay. Yeah, good.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the language of resolution 2024-17 with the revisions discussed.
Second.
Member Wobak?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Wobak?
Aye.
Member Cook?
Same.
Chair Bristow?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, now number 18. As I'm looking at this, Mindy, I had a question for you. The, um, seeker citations, one of them was for lot line adjustments and there is criticism of that because there was really no lot line adjustment, but it says, the citations are like and/or, so it's one, so I didn't think that was legally meaningful.
Where are you?
Uh, number one, seeker, number one, one at the bottom. So the primary one is the 4,000 square feet limitation.
Right.
That was, I don't, that's either 9 or 18, I don't remember which one. I don't remember what...
I don't remember which one either.
Anyway, it's an and/or, so I think as long as one, it works for one, we're covered, great.
Yeah, I thought that I, um, I took another look at that and then I took out the lot lines. One, let's see if I can...
We certainly could take that out.
Yeah, let me tell, because I'll, I'll go back and I will make these revisions for you.
For the final screening.
And I will double check the seeker citations again.
Okay, nine is, um, construction of a facility, commercial structure under 4,000 square feet.
Right.
Okay. Um, 16 is setback in lot line variances and adjustments and 18 is reuse of a, uh, commercial structure.
Right.
So we could strike 16.
And just say and, uh...
Nine and 18.
Just go with nine and 18.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to amend, um, the prior resolution um, to include a, uh, to modify the language in resolution 2024-17 to strike the seeker citation of 617.5C16.
And what about no further review is required?
That's fine.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Is that... Thank you. Member Cook?
Uh, same.
Member Wobak?
Aye.
Member Wobak?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Chair Bristow?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. So this is much longer.
I'm, I don't love this location, have no parking.
Where's that?
It's the third line. Do not, do not have parking.
Yeah.
Like have nothing. Just not on the...
Yep.
Do not.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, what?
Right on.
Okay, many properties have no parking.
We can say do not have...
Do not have parking.
Do not have parking.
I would say the properties directly across the street.
Add directly?
Yeah. Because otherwise it could just be somewhere across the street.
Across the street.
Okay. I'll add minor wording changes, or well, whatever is needed, that's fine.
I have a change, the or to and.
Where?
Adequate parking exists in the village across the street in the municipal lot and on side streets.
Okay. Are you getting all of this?
Maybe she's going editing these.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and she'll, I'll have the file on Twitter to sign.
Okay. Last, you'd say you revise these lots at time, though?
No.
Or this one?
These, the, the legal ones.
Okay.
Did the tail end of A get sucked into B?
Oh no. Wait.
There's something wrong with A and B.
Something's like in here.
Oh.
I think the only thing that should be here is a last sentence at the end. Like everything else that's in B should still be in A.
Definitely.
Yeah, so it...
It always starts, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved, it's the last sentence.
Yeah, is B.
Yep.
Well, I think when I'm reading it, that becomes obvious here, I hadn't gotten down to B yet. Here's a comment here, the code requires six parking spaces. That was a determination of Steve.
Yes.
I think that should, um, the building inspector determined that rather than us interpreting code, we have Steve interpreting it.
Yep.
So it's a moreover, the building?
The building inspector determined that.
Okay, so the building inspector determined that six parking spaces are required for retail uses.
There we go.
Okay, I'm done with A and I'm okay with the rest of it. Okay. Okay, so now the next one is the actual B. Benefits thought cannot be achieved by some other feasible method because, okay.
I think there's a double period at the end of that.
Yep. Last one to come up.
There is no way you...
Yeah, it's the same. It sounds a little...
It sounds a little off. Susan, you have a suggestion or, or not worth worrying about?
It is impossible. It is impracticable.
One cannot.
Yeah.
Sure, there you go, one...
One cannot.
One cannot build adequate parking on this site.
Or adequate parking cannot be built.
No.
Anyway.
Either way, it don't matter.
Yeah.
So one cannot or adequate parking cannot be.
Do you want to say the building inspector's determination that, of the car, code parking requirement makes it nearly impossible for a restaurant to comply?
Well, he gave us, my memory of this is his comment was on, I think he stated what the, the code said for restaurants and then we asked him for retail because it's based on square footage. We didn't know what the square footage of the building was.
Right.
So his determination was on retail and then I think he just recited the code for...
Ah, okay, got it.
So...
So it's a definition.
It's, it's, I think it's unclear to us exactly how many employees they have.
Okay.
Also, it's unclear to us how many tables they're going to have, or seats. I know, I think that was less nebulous. So I don't know, I'm okay with it the way it is. I don't know if, whether the way we want to, uh, word this. I mean, someone could say you can have a restaurant with no seats, but you need to have practical constraints to operate a business. Are we just leaving it, moving on to C?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm okay with C.
Indeed, it looks like we have some of the same changes from A.
Right, adequate parking exists in the village across the street.
Or directly across the street.
Directly across the street. And on side streets. Oh, no, directly across the street was, had to do with.
Property.
Right.
So those downtown have no parking, including the properties directly across the street.
Right.
But then the municipal lot does not have the directly.
Right, so correct. So I'm going to take out the directly there. And change the order.
E, it looks like there's a semicolon at the end.
Yep, that should be a period. And the last sentence, indeed, the building inspector state, stated that he is unaware.
Need to capitalize comprehensive plan.
Uh huh.
Does it make sense to said they? Instead of zoning code amendments?
Where are you, Justin?
E. They, we adopted entirely new zoning code. It wasn't just amendments.
He's in, he's in E of L.
Right, right.
Oh, E of L.
The Village of Pittsburgh adopted a new zoning code. And map in 2021. That was in 2021, right? Not in 2019?
Um, no, it was all, this was all in 2019.
Okay.
They, they modified them again since that time, but. And then November, November 21, 2019.
Right, so D would be the village adopted a 2019 comprehensive plan and a new zoning code on November 21st. And then E, the Village of Pittsburgh again adopted, is, was it a new or?
Adopted, the zoning, oh, okay, in 2021, they revised zoning map.
Okay.
The comprehensive plan was unchanged and this one is zoning code amendments. I'm sorry, I don't know, is that relevant? That there's a new map and amendments in 2021?
Yeah, it goes to show how very inapplicable the Rachel's determination was.
Okay. And section 210-78 was repealed in November 2019.
So I'll put that after D. Or I'll put the 2021 stuff.
Yeah, you can move that, Bob.
That down, okay.
And the same thing with the B1 business district was repealed in November 21, 2019. You have that in there, okay. And J, community preferences for accommodating pedestrian and bicycle.
I thought they preferred pedestrian and bicycle modes of transportation over motor vehicle transportation.
So we prefer it over motor vehicles or, I don't know, I mean, they're great, but we're not trying to get rid of motor vehicles at the moment.
No, it's preference.
Okay. That's what it says, that's what it says.
About the current parking lot is substandard and dangerous.
Okay.
Sounds like there's a schedule for hitting the baller.
Schedule, oh, okay. Well, here's them at 1:00 and 3:00.
That's right, that's right.
Well, maybe routinely is not a good word there.
Regularly or commonly.
Often.
Often.
Often?
We don't, I don't have records.
Hmm, what's regular?
Yeah, frequently is good. That is lacking N.
Yeah, you know what? Let's move that up to the current parking lot is substandard, dangerous and lacks end space maneuver, maneuverability. Yeah.
That's basically, I mean, the part, if you have spaces on the end, there's supposed to be a little T-shaped wing for you to back up in there, if you know what that means.
So the one-way door.
I think it's a fire door.
Oh, yeah.
Or fire exit, sorry.
Maybe we take out the gratuitous comment that safety is very important in the downtown area of the village and pedestrian safety is a significant part of the village comp plan and transportation. That's kind of gratuitous.
It's kind of important everywhere.
I'm sorry?
Kind of important everywhere.
Yeah, right.
Should go without saying, right?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Okay.
Now I don't understand the first sentence of H.
What did we have in the last one? Is there actually different wording?
No, I think I left it.
You could quibble with it, but I don't necessarily have a problem with it either.
Okay, does this refer to?
The first sentence of H?
Yeah.
So this, this is consistent? This variance?
Yeah.
Or, we're going to say elimination of parking.
Yeah, this, this variance, I mean, when you said it in the last one, it's actually this variance.
Okay.
Oh, you know what? If you take moving, if you change up to move, it makes sense.
Or place.
Right.
Maybe instead of moving and place.
Okay, this, this is fine.
I think this, later in H, that's the same problem as capitalizing comprehensive planning.
Yeah, I'm going to just throw out, right.
And zoning code can be capitalized.
Yes.
Is it just zoning or is it code too?
Code too.
Okay. What's this last sentence here? Comments provided to board regarding easement. I think because they're supposed to be.
Oh, I think that's supposed, that's just supposed to come out.
That's supposed to be the next sentence outside of here, not indented.
Correct. No, I just, it did delete that.
Just remove that?
Yeah.
So strike, strike that last sentence on H.
Yes.
And the board received a public or. So received a public comment that a private need.
It doesn't need a.
Yeah, I think it's better without it.
I'm sorry?
I think it's actually better without the A.
Right, I thought so too. And then the, the therefore clause will also be changed near the other one.
Are there any reason to explain any of these last ones? Okay.
Some building has been sold, which spoken.
Is it the, is it the?
Oh, really?
Yeah, because I took the sign out.
Is it the, or just Rachel?
Let's, maybe we should close out the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Let's do.
Okay, well, let's make a motion to accept the language of resolution 2024-18 with the changes discussed.
Second.
Member Shannon?
Hi.
Member Lola?
Hi.
Member Will?
Hi.
Member Co?
Mr. Steve.
Jared Restra?
Hi.
And Travis?
Okay, Justin, you're here.
Jared, you had to sit through this and you weren't even having a meeting.
He has some good comments.
Chad terrific comments. He wasn't even looking at it.
Do you want to do the minutes that go with it? The special meeting minutes that go with it or just do?
Um, I.
I think we're waiting for the, we're ready for the resolutions primarily, right?
Well, I had, I had some questions over some of the public comments submitted and in there, in particular, Mike Reynolds made some statements about relying on these variances for other projects or his new project.
So what do we put, do you want to make?
I just don't know, I just don't know which, I don't know which meeting that comment was made in.
We, we, it was in November, September 17th and I'm pretty sure that we already had it for your suggestion.
Okay, so, all right, so what am I looking at?
It says that, the one I have here just says Mike Reynolds supports previously approved variances, stating they remain valid. He emphasizes his commitment to improving the property, aligning with the comp plans to change the village's character, but I don't think that.
That's, yeah, he made claims at our meetings, especially at regular meeting and special meeting. The special meeting is a comment that Mr. Reynolds was talking about.
But I don't see it on the draft that you have in front of us.
On 9/17?
Oh, this is 9/4. It's a false 9/4.
Okay, so you had a chance to rego back and look at these, that's great.
9/17 is when we actually approved the resolution, the special meeting.
Yes. Okay, I see what you mean. He additionally noted that a special use permit was granted by the trustees for a new restaurant. Got it, okay.
So yes, 9/4, they spoke in 9/17, not at 9/18, yeah. It was the same speakers.
I mean, these minutes were pretty brief. I'm trying to find, where's the 9/4 one? Um, Mindy, does it make sense to note that, um, we received, uh, written materials from Mr. Fitzsimmons, the minutes?
Right.
There is, there is a comment from, um, in some of the proceedings that there is no indication that the board considered submission.
Oh, right, right.
That was a good catch.
Yeah.
Okay. And that was on the fourth, right?
I believe that was the fourth.
Right, okay.
Yeah, we could just say Charlie Fitzsimmons submitted written comments.
Okay.
Is the continuity, just for clarification, to mention, uh, written comment because it's part of the resolution? It was mentioned in, uh. Because we usually don't.
In this case, we will.
Okay.
So it'll just be one sentence, Charlie Fitzsimmons submitted written comments, period.
Got it.
And then the other thing that I would like to see changed is, um, where it says Chairperson Lister and Member Cook seconds to open the public hearing for the rehearing of both variances at Five State Street. And the same thing for the, um, minutes of September 17th.
Rehearing.
Right, for the rehearing of the variances for Five State Street. I'm sorry, I kept you guys so long.
No, it's okay.
We were tempted to dispel out, but it's nice to get a resolve.
Yeah.
Are you approving the 9417?
Somebody got to make a resolution for that?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for September 4th and September 17th with the revisions discussed. Second.
Member Shannon.
I'm.
Member Rota.
Hi.
Member Will.
Hi.
Member Cook.
Um, I think I have to abstain for 17. So I'll just abstain for both, so you don't have to, because there's only a member here to approve, so I'll just abstain for both.
Uh, Chair Listra.
Hi.
Motion passes for.
Oh, wait. But you voted on the fourth. No, you didn't vote on the 17th. You weren't here.
Right, I did not vote on the 17th.
Because you weren't here, okay.
I was there on the fourth, but he was, he was abstaining.
But I can abstain from both and the motion's passed.
Yeah, that's fine, I just like, the pages are swimming in my head.
I know, I do.
I could have made two motions, I tried to abbreviate it to one and that created an extra 30 seconds of discretion, unfortunately. You were right. Okay, motion to adjourn. Second.
Member Will.
Hi.
Member Shannon.
Aye.
Member Rota.
Aye.
Member Cook.
Aye.
Chair Listra.
Hi.
Motion passes.